1941, 77 years ago tomorrow. On Pearl Harbor Day, the American flag should be flown at half-staff until sunset to honor those who died as a result of the attack on U.S. military forces. However, the flag is already at half-staff until month's end in recognition of the passing of our 41st President George H.W. Bush.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Budgets, again, welcome everyone. I see our various representatives. I'd like to invite Veteran Services to join us at the table. Greetings, salutations.
Okay, so Keith German and Lisa Potts are here representing the Veterans Department. So I will, I'll follow the same process I have on the previous budgets where I'm just going to review the, my recommendation, the department head recommendation, my recommendation, and then we'll ask the department to walk through their presentation. So, given that, the Veteran Services budget is summarized on Roman numeral page 12. And on that page, you'll see that Mr. German's department request is summed at $355,123, which I am recommending. That represents an increase of $46,128 or a 14.93 percent increase. If you jump ahead to page 242 in your books, you'll see the Veteran Services budget and the presentation starts on page 245.
So, as we go through, we administer benefits to qualified veterans and their dependents under Mass. General Law, Chapter 115, providing assistance to those and advocate for the town's veterans and dependents. As you know, we have direct emergency financial assistance for veterans in conjunction with the Town's Veterans Council, who I see here in the back of the room, and I welcome their presence tonight. We also coordinate all the military ceremonies and events to recognize and honor Hingham veterans. We liaise with regional, state, federal veterans, officials, and programs to advocate for resources and other services and benefits that they maybe have earned. This is a picture of a ceremony we had just this summer to recognize the 65th anniversary, if you will, of the armistice in Korea. There are several veterans, about a dozen veterans, and some received medals from the Republic of Korea posthumously. So both the Director, myself, and the Administrator are among 13 elected officials of statewide boards for Massachusetts Veteran Service Officer Associations. There's over 250 members that we are elected from, aboard, and we sit on a board of 13. We're certified and compliant with Mass. General Law's Chapter 115, which means we have annual training that must be facilitated through the state.
Wait one. Does anybody know where that's coming from?
It's a little musical interlude, the Veteran Services budget.
So, Chapter 115 benefits are paid to an average of about 30 clients here in Hingham monthly, which totaled $243,000 approximately in 2018. Massachusetts is still the only state in the nation that provides these benefits to veterans and their dependents. Hingham clients, as you can imagine, are mostly World War II or aging veterans of the World War II and Korea population. However, as the Vietnam veterans of today start to retire, which is right around now, I'm starting to see an uptick in there, in providing services for them as well. VA revenue, so that's federal revenue of just a little bit south of $252,000, which is received by veterans in Hingham. There's several of those claims would be pension, death benefits, compensation from service-connected disabilities. Those are things that those veterans, unlike other states, would have to navigate on their own. They'd have to be well-versed with the forms and the computer assets available to be able to process those. Again, we have a VSO in every city and state, every city and town in the Commonwealth, and those individuals are welcome to come in and we help them file those. It's just a, it's a mountain of paperwork that I wouldn't imagine a normal citizen would be able to, be able to handle. So we're very fortunate on that. We also manage the Veterans in Need Fund, Veterans Benefits Fund. We have a stake, we're stakeholders in the Commander Paul Anderson House. That's our six-room SRO. SRO stands for Single Room Occupancy of veterans that are qualified to live there, usually homelessness being one of the main qualifications. Father Bill MaySpring is our operating partner in that, on the day-to-day operation. South Shore Veterans Town Hall Forum, we've had twice now annually, and that's a great time for our local legislators, both our Reverend and our state senator, to come in and hear what veterans from the South Shore, not only Hingham but the whole entire South Shore, the district, what they have to say, what new things they might need, or things that they, that they wouldn't see up on Beacon Hill if they didn't have that face-to-face contact. And having them so readily accessible and supportive is a great benefit for all the veterans of the South Shore. We also belong to a Plymouth Regional Veterans Council that's made up of the federal VA, so the Women's Veterans Network Program, and the Outreach Coordinator, who we're both in touch with readily. We meet on the whole Plymouth County quarterly usually to exchange good best practices, ideas, and how to get services that the federal government has that's unlike what we have in the state. And something new that we started is a monthly coffee social down in the coffee shop downstairs on the third Friday of every month. We host veterans from, again, from the whole South Shore, and it's more like, it's just a drop-in session and, hey, what's new? Have you heard of this benefit? How do I get this? Where do I go? Who's my agent? For instance, those are the topics that come up quite frequently. So, the staff expenses, the salaries. So, one full-time personnel, which is myself, the Director, one part-time personnel, which is the Veterans Benefits Administrator to my left, Lisa Potts. Those salaries are on the calculated budget sheet for fiscal year '20, which is done from the Town Accountant, so the COLA and for myself, there are no step increases anticipated this year, so that was, was easy to chart. The expenses, $7,019. Those are the expenses inside the office, so that's everything that we control. I know many times I've spoken about this, that the benefits that these veterans and widows earned are guided under Mass. General Law, and this law's been in effect for almost 150 years. So, where to provide financial, emergency, medical, regular shelter, fuel benefits to those who qualify. So usually, to be able to qualify, those people are living 200 percent below the federal poverty line. And we have those, those benefits paid out in Hingham. But the only thing that I can control is the expenses. So the, what we call in the military, the beans, bullets, and Band-Aids. So, the major items there, $2,370 for meetings, seminars, so that's how we get trained, that's how we stay up to date, that's how we provide good stewardship of the money here that we spend. As you know, it's a 75-25 split, so for every hundred dollars that we put towards a veteran or widow in need, if the paperwork is filled out properly and submitted on time by Mrs. Potts and it's verified by our Town Treasurer, we usually receive a 75 percent return on our investment. So, the $1,570 is for in-state travel. Again, that's for traveling to some of these major events. It's also for getting outreach, a lot of, we do a lot of outreach here in Hingham. Recently, I sent the Board of Selectmen a graph of a chart of our population and what we look like, you know, compared to other cities and towns that have our mean income and our population, so they had split it in two different groups. I would dare to say that we're above the curve on that, and that's from the great support that we receive up here on the third floor, and it's just the right thing to do. So we wouldn't have this law still in effect for 150 years if there was, if it wasn't the right thing to do. So I'm proud to say that we kind of lead the way out here.
So I think that's it for the Veterans budget with, if you have questions, then we'll go into GAR next.
I don't have any questions. I just think that, you know, I think you all know, particularly the Veterans Council members who are in the audience, the activities of the Veterans Office can't be summed up in these bullet points. It's a 24/7 operation by Lisa and Keith. And, you know, one thing I will say is, I participated in the Town Hall last year, I believe, and, you know, in the library context, you talk about being a net lender or a net borrower. Hingham is by far a net lender. You know, I was so proud to be in that room because every program, every opportunity, the sort of empathetic offering of the services, people kept pointing to Keith and to Hingham as really the gold standard. And it just, to your point, Keith, it's not only our statutory obligation, it's our moral obligation, and you undertake that on behalf of the town in a way that defies expectation. So, I can't say enough about, again, we've heard, we've heard this over the last several days, you know, relatively small budgets work very hard for this town, and in this case, work very hard for a population in need. And I applaud your efforts.
And I would just add that everybody in this room who's connected with Veteran Services, and welcome to the Veterans Council, we're glad you're here, does a wonderful job in seeking out veterans in our community and educating them on benefits that they have earned that they may not be aware of. And then, when they come in here to Town Hall through Keith and through Lisa and through other volunteers, you help people navigate some complex paperwork that sometimes, you know, people might not fill it out right, or they might get discouraged. And I wish the process was easier where people could find out what they're entitled to, and I just wish that whole process went easier. Although it doesn't, we're so fortunate here in Hingham that all of you plug those holes and really help make sure that, that those benefits are received, and that's no small task, and we're just so very appreciative.
And I guess the one other bullet that I know you didn't include, because it's maybe not under your direct supervision, but it's the High School Veterans Appreciation Club. I know you work closely with that population, and I think that, again, Hingham is a leader in that area, and I think it's provided a sense of pride in those students to be able to recognize the service of our veterans of town. So, again.
Thank you.
One of the things that I truly enjoyed last Saturday was Sergeant Leonard coming up to you and expressing his appreciation for your guidance and mentorship, and that's really not expressed in a monetary benefit, but I had the pleasure of giving two flag for soldiers to his mother and father a number of years ago. So, that, to me, spoke volumes, sir, that that's the kind of thing. I really, really enjoy seeing your dedication to the younger veterans and your support of them, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Potts.
You're welcome.
Okay, page Roman numeral 10. We have the budget for the Grand Army Memorial Hall. Is how, is what it's referred to in here, Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Hall.
Correct.
I'm sure Keith is dying to tell me that. No, the "R" meant something. Okay, so the departmental request was $16,256. My recommendation is the same, an increase of $391 or a 2.5, or 4.6 percent increase. The budget begins on page 121, and the presentation, again, shortly thereafter.
So, the Grand Army, the Republic Memorial Hall, it's a treasury that we have here in Hingham, built in 1888. It's maintained by the trustees of, one of three trustees, who I see in the audience tonight, Mr. Frank Shealan, Mr. Robert Beale Jr., and Mr. Scott McMillan, who chairs the current committee. They are responsible for the day-to-day operation of the hall. Ms. Potts and I are more the operating budgets. We help them produce this budget. We have the means to pay the bills on time through their open meeting. So, it's also open, speaking of open, the hall itself is open to the public now, which is new in the last year or so. It's open twice monthly as a historical museum, on the first and third Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for self-guided tours. That hall, which is not mentioned in this slide, is staffed by veterans who work on a several-years-old law now called the Valor Act. So by providing a little over 100 to 125 hours of service to the Department of Veteran Services, they're allowed to take anywhere between $1,000 and $1,500 off their property tax as an exemption for the work that they perform. So without those services, that gem or that facility would not be open to the public. We would not be able to staff that without the use of those volunteers, so I applaud those who, who step forward to do that. The expenses, $16,256. The major items there, as you can imagine, is about a little south of $8,000, is the repair and maintenance of the building to keep it in its pristine shape. It's of museum quality, for those of you who have not been in there. There's artifacts that date back to the Civil War until the conflicts of today, so, and everything in between. And the items that you see on the walls and in these display cases are real items. The utilities, again, just to keep it operating, $6,117. We garnish that through the fuels and utilities worksheet, again, that's maintained and provided for us by the Town Accountant, so.
And the elevator's in good shape?
The elevator has been in good shape. We have, we have.
Forget I raised that.
We had had some major, we had a major catastrophic event, you know, within the last, I want to say half, it was about a half-dozen years ago. We've overcame that. We have the same maintenance contract now that was recommended by the Town Administrator and that serves the rest of our buildings here in town, so it seems to be, it seems to be working well.
Okay, thank you.
I know that you also, every year, the Hingham High School sophomore class, I think it's through teacher Christie O'Connor, comes, is that in the springtime, Keith?
So usually, right, that's usually in April. It's a walking, a walking field trip for the high school, and they really appreciate it because it's no overhead for them.
Well, and I think it, it, along with the open houses that you have, are a way to expose people who might not otherwise have the opportunity to be in GAR Hall, to both get an appreciation for the history that's there, and, and also for all the people who work, you know, who work so hard to, to make all that accessible. It's always amazing to me when you think about the volunteers, you know, the number of volunteer hours in particular in GAR Hall that's gone into not only getting the hall to where it is, but maintaining it. I think if we had to pay for that, this budget would be like, you know, 10 times this amount. So I just, again, so appreciate the volunteerism and the efforts in particular of the trustees.
I think it's a great part of history that's preserved, and I'm glad that it stays
Roman numeral 13. On page Roman numeral 13, we have the celebrations budget. This is a budget that's also managed by, by Mr. German and Ms. Potts. Their requested amount for FY '20 was $15,661. I recommend the same for an increase of $2,393 or an 18.04 percent increase. The budget is on, found on page 299.
So the decoration, most of the expenses here are, that we control, are Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and one that I'll make note of in a moment. The Fourth of July budget is not maintained by Department of Veteran Services, but it isn't.
Yeah, I think we took it off.
Right, it is included in there.
Sorry about that.
So we, there's over 22 military and veterans memorials that we decorate. Under, under Mass. General Law, it's required that we decorate those, those memorials. We use live wreaths that we think is sufficient to provide honor and dignity to those men who, who served this town. There's a placement of over 3,000 U.S. flags, also part of what we call the decoration. So, the six cemeteries in Hingham are private cemeteries. Again, we, we use a host of volunteers, really that's headed up by members of the Veterans Council, so they act as the point people for those six cemeteries. I, for one, take on the Liberty Plains Cemetery. I know that Selectman Johnson has come up there before to help put flags in place. I see Mr. Beale in the audience as well. He usually does St. Paul's, and what we do is, that point person then, from time to time, from the DPW, I also see in the room, they have, have students that have to serve community service, usually for the bottles and cans that are collected up at, at the transfer station. And through, through a series of events, they'll show up or say, hey, we're available, you know, girl softball team, for instance, can we help out? And they'll serve those community service where they, they were able to get those funds for their club or their organization or their sports team by providing that service. Again, with over 3,000 graves, as one person, which is the Veteran Service Officer, I'm also the Veterans Graves Officer, that would be impossible task for me to do, the amount of hours that that would take. So without those people helping out, it would, it's, it would just be insurmountable. So we, we look great having that done every year. It's the first three weeks preceding Memorial Day in May. So the ceremonies, as they break out, it's about $8,211 for Memorial Day. Veterans Day is about $1,540. Most of the Veterans Day events, there's wreaths, as you know, we have speakers here at Town Hall. We were able to, to eliminate some of the costs for a public address system because we use in-house system. We're inside. The weather is a little bit more unpredictable in November than it is in May, so we're able to use the facilities here, and it helps keep our costs down. Again, we have a volunteer staff. We use the Veterans Appreciation Club on both these events to help seat veterans, to bus tables, to, to help with the awards, to hand out programs. Another, another great, great venue for those students to interact with veterans of all generations, so. The last item on this, which is probably the most significant increase, is the Battle of Grape Island, which is currently not funded, but has gone on two years now annually, and will go on again this year. But looking forward, as this has become a welcomed community event, it seems only fitting that the town be able to fund it properly. There is a little bit more of a cost involved in that, which is reenactors, to really make it of the historical value that it has come to be and come to know. We've tried two different venues. We seem to have been able to settle now at Hingham Harbor, which seems to be the best spot for us, again, trying to keep, keep things to a cost minimum. Public address systems and the reenactors are probably the biggest, the biggest payment that's expensed, that is needed for that. And the townsfolk, they, they love it, they, they show up, they come, inclement weather or not, and it's been a great, it's been a great event. So I think if we're going to continue to move forward, that the private donations that it has relied on can always go back to that wealth, so it would be, we'd need to start funding it moving forward.
And would it be something that's administered out of your office as well, or is there a volunteer group that puts it, puts it on at the moment?
So, right now, it was funded through, kind of like what we have in other departments, a gift account. So monies that were collected in excess of what we spent were held at Historical. So Andrea Young held it in one of her gift accounts, and we would take expenses out of there from the ad hoc committee that we had set up through, we used one person from Veterans Council was on that ad hoc committee, Historical, which was Andrea Young, and Harbor Development, I think was Deirdre, Deirdre Anderson, yeah. So those three people made up that committee, so to speak, and then they took as many volunteers as they could to carry it out. So, moving forward though, it would need to be maybe thought about even perhaps to have some type of committee moving forward, not just ad hoc. I'm sure those people would lend to it, but it might be something to maybe think about, maybe subsequent appointments in the future to run it.
I like the idea that it combines the different departments, the activity, and I agree with you, I've enjoyed it thoroughly when I participated in it.
Yeah, didn't you speak at it?
I think I did.
I think you did.
I like the, I like the location down at the harbor. I think it, I think you, you get people who are sort of driving by, and especially in the shipyard, if you don't sort of know where some of, if you don't know where that little park is, you can drive, you can drive around looking for it for quite some time. Not that that happened to me, but.
I mean, you, you know, you do a wonderful job with these celebrations. There are moments that the community ought to and should and does stop and pause and reflect and remember. You bring a formality to it that I think contributes to the solemn nature of, of what we're doing, and so, and that formality just doesn't happen, as you both know. It takes a lot of organization to get us all there. But when, when, when I've been in attendance, you have a program, you have, you've been thoughtful about who the speakers are, and I just think it contributes to our ability as a community to provide that sort of recognition and remembrance, and, again, I thank you for that.
I would echo that. It's one of my favorite parts of my role as a Selectman, participating in it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Good work.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for.
Thanks to Veterans Council for coming.
Gentlemen and ladies.
Feel free to stick around for the Public Works budget.
No.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you.
Don't take it personally, Roger.
Wow. It's just us again.
Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of my favorite people.
How are you, Roger? How are you, Eric?
Well, thank you.
Okay, what do we got?
Okay, so if you go to Roman numeral page 11, I almost said nine, it's been a while, 11. We have the Town Engineer budget. So we have Harry Sylvester and Roger Fernandez joining us from the Engineering Department. And we'll start with the Town Engi, oh no, you guys just do the Town Engineering budget, right? So the Town Engineering budget, the departmental request for 2020 is $592,748 with a $7,410 additional request. I am recommending roughly half of that, or $3,500, to bring the total Town Administrator recommendation to $596,248. That's a decrease of $1,858 or a .31 percent decrease from last year.
That makes sense.
That does.
It doesn't make sense. Why would that go down? Michelle, do you have any inkling? Let me just get to the main budget. Hold on a second. There's no decrease in salary, right, from any, any of the three of you?
No, no decrease, no step changes.
Oh, it's the Selectmen's Engineering budget that we switched, that we shifted to the Selectmen's office.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Which Roger will explain as he goes, right, it's in the presentation, I believe. So we'll, we'll explain it if not, if you don't have, we'll go through.
So it's shifting.
That's right. With shifting money, that's right. Thank you.
Yeah, $19,000 was shifted to the Selectmen's budget. Okay.
So on page 191 is the presentation for the Engineering Department.
So again, thank you for allowing us to present this to you today. I think we actually look forward to it. Most communities, their Engineering Department focus is solely on.
No, no decrease, no step changes.
Oh, it's the Selectman's Engineering Budget that we switched, that we shifted to the Selectman's Office.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Which Roger will explain as he goes, right, it's in the presentation, I believe. So we'll explain it if not, if you don't have, we'll go through it.
So it's shifting.
That's right. With shifting money, that's right, thank you.
Yeah, $19,000 was shifted to the Selectman's Budget. Okay.
So on page 191 is the presentation for the Engineering Department.
So again, thank you for allowing us to present this to you today. I think we actually look forward to it. Most communities, their engineering department focuses solely on roadway stuff, if you will. I think that maybe through just attrition, we do that, plus we think a little more, so we welcome the opportunity to explain that to those who might be watching at home. So, of course, we manage and reconstruct and rehabilitate almost 113 miles of town roadway. That work averages on annual about $1.3 million, although last year, and the year prior to that, it was more than that because we had the bond that the town issued to sort of accelerate the road building. And we'll talk about that a little bit in a couple of slides. So I always want to qualify what manage means. Manage means that we procure, we do the oversight, we order the materials, we really try to act as the administrators of the work in full capacity in an effort to realize as much savings as we can with the work. So we segment the work and we don't pay general contractors with mockups to do that. So we manage all that subcontractors, and as I said, in many cases, we, in most cases, I should say, we order the material as well. So in addition to that, we perform a fair amount of public procurement, just again through attrition, and that includes the vertical as well as horizontal projects. And when we say vertical, we mean projects that are associated with buildings. Examples of that would be, of course, our most recent bathhouse project, the auditorium across the hall, the roof that's going to take place at some point across the way here in this building at the school department, the library, the library roof and rooftop unit replacements, the rec barn out back, the landfill, yada, yada, so on and so forth. So we undertake a lot of other non-conventional sort of horizontal projects, the procurement associated with that. In addition to that, we undertake a lot of the lease procurements. We drafted the lease agreement over at the bathhouse, and we've worked with the Lincoln School Apartments to help them with their property management lease some years back. And of course, we work with design consultants from time to time. One, for example, is a 3A project. We're working with a consultant there. We went through a procurement process there, although it didn't fall into chapter seven, design and selection, excuse me, selection process. There are times when we think it's important to undergo a process, even though it might not be required statutorily, just to keep that air of openness and make folks feel comfortable that we're undergoing a process and it isn't arbitrary and sort of capricious. And we do have, sometimes we implement a more rigorous process, even though it's not required by Mass General laws. So, and we do draft, implement management plans and procedures from time to time. One would be, of course, example would be work with the CPC, Carol in our office also. Carol and I try to help the CPC process along, and we put together a process manual that helps folks understand the process from a regulatory standpoint and also just a local process standpoint, what to expect. We coordinate with state agencies, the Executive Office of Transportation, dealing with roadway projects, Department of Environmental Protection with respect to permitting, the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development with respect to grants. In many cases, we'll talk about that in a second. The Seaport Economic Council, another grant opportunity that we've been able to take advantage of in the past, and the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And to that point, in terms of grant preparation, we've administered a number of grants since 2011. In fact, when we added up all the grant awards, this doesn't include the applications, because sometimes they do say no, we've been able to realize $2.6 million since 2011. And when we get those grants, I just, just to bring to light, they require a fair amount of reporting, dealing with the state agencies, whether it's a Seaport grant, or at one point a Moore grant, it's no longer Pwood, now it's Mass Works. All these different grants require a number of, some significant reporting in addition to the actual management of the project. So when we get, the town gets $700,000 Seaport grants, that just means we have to manage $700,000 more worth of work, which we welcome, we're glad to do, but it is, it does tax the department to a certain extent. And sometimes it's, we can't forecast, you know, when we apply. So we've received that grant, another one we just recently received, of course, was an MVP grant, $50,000 to go towards a study, it's a miserable vulnerability program, the study of town assets and its vulnerability. We're having a meeting next week with stakeholders to go over that. So there's a number of grant opportunities we try to take advantage that soften the burden on the community from a funding standpoint. So some of our continued missions and services, we, you know, of course, we prepare yearly capital, outlay plans, budgets, and departmental operational budgets. We work with a number of project proponents, cities, citizens committees and boards, the Board of Selectmen, of course, the Harbor Development Committee, 3A Task Force, other building committees, the trustees of the bathing beach, the Affordable Housing Trust, the South Hingham Study Group. We spent three years with those folks, the chairman, Haley, was on that. The Hingham Maritime Center folks, we're working closely with them, they received a grant recently, and we're trying to help them along. And of course, the CPC. So what that means is, of course, some additional night meetings, and sometimes it can be quite a few, but we try as best we can to staff these meetings and provide them with some support when it's needed. Skipping on to the next, sort of mentioned the following bulletin, moving forward, we view and coordinate with utility companies. That's National Grid, that's Aquarian Water, that's Verizon, that's Hingham Municipal Light Plan. We meet with most of those folks, at least on an annual basis, sometimes more frequent to go over our road building, as you know. But in addition to that, those respective public utilities come and see us, in particular for permits to cut roads, street opening permits, grant to locations, which you hear here. That work requires that we look at the job, what they're going to do, and in some cases, for example, it could tax the department a little bit because, for example, the Main Street gas replacement, that's several weeks in the making, it's all night work, and we just don't let them go out there and cut our roads. It does require that we pop in from time to time, and we like to call it keeping people honest, making sure they're backfunding properly, so they don't compromise these very important assets. And we get, and of course, you know, our main focus here is to assist the residents whenever we can. So what we did this year, as you know, about 10 years ago, we went through a cost analysis and, of the, a cost analysis, but also a capital needs analysis of the town's infrastructure. We looked at the roads and we put together a forecast in terms of what that investment would have to be to bring the roads to a certain condition. And almost yearly, we come back and we report back, are we on track, how are we looking? And so that forecast, initial forecast, was made 10 years ago. And at our last meetings, we had, last sort of public presentation meeting, we had forecasted that we would be between a 1 and a 2 in terms of our road condition. But this year, we thought it would be prudent to sort of have an outside audit. So we paid someone else, a third party, to go out and sort of say, hey, this is where we think we're at, we want to report back to folks and tell them where we're at, but sort of an unbiased look at that. And they did. And they, and what that meant is, a company called Robotics Inc., they went out and they drove every mile of road in the town of Hingham. And they undergo a data collection, run that through an algorithm, and they come back, and we have a fairly comprehensive report, pictures of every segment of the road, and they, thankfully, they validated what I think we had forecasted and we had said. They said that right now, the PQI, the pavement quality index, is about a 1.9. 1 is excellent, 2 is good, 3 is fair, 4 is poor, and then 5 is failing. So we're in pretty good shape, we think.
Roger, could you just advance the slide so that Bob could pick it up? Because I think this data, this is an excellent description. I think the picture will help the viewing audience. Thank you.
Sure, I'm sorry, I fell behind a little there. So this graph gives you a sense of, you know, where we were in 2011, shown in green, and in 2018, shown in the purplish blue. And you can begin to see that there was a shift from those fair and poor roads to the good road, sort of column. You didn't see an increase in the excellent roads, but remember, part of the process doesn't call for us to fix excellent roads. It tries, we try to focus on those roads before they get into that number five of failing column. So, again, the slide's intended just to provide a benchmark in terms of where we ended up. And now we think that we're in a hold position with the current funding. And chapter 9, it does fluctuate slightly, but we think we're probably in a hold position for a while, so I think that was the ultimate goal.
Before you move on from that slide, did that report validate the priorities for road repair that we've established as well, or was it just an overall quality of our roadway?
Just an overall quality, yeah.
That's an impressive statistic.
Yeah, we're really happy, you know, we were hoping that they would come back and say, hey, what you've done is kind of in line with what you had forecasted, and they did that. So we were happy with the results.
I mean, I wonder how many other communities are, right? Especially after the weather that we've had for the last, you know, five to eight years. It's a tough environment for the roadways.
Well, we, at the risk of sounding a little cocky, I mean, we get a lot of calls from, and Tari gets most of them, but we get a lot of calls from other communities, sort of, how are you doing it? And I think that we've done a number of things, which includes introduction of a system that was unconventional at first, in terms of the micro-surfacing and the, and we have roads that were, Abington Street's a great example. If you had seen it before and after, you would have never thought, but if you drive down that road today, it still looks wonderful. Union Street's another example, Central Street's another example. So our roads tend to, the right approach tends to give you the best benefit for the dollar. And so we do have a lot of communities that now have sort of adopted that approach.
I've also just, you know, through different requests and things, your department does a wonderful job tracking data, and then you use that data to make decisions and set priorities. And I think that's also one of the reasons why we've been so successful. And I wonder if other communities are as rigorous in keeping track of all the data the way that you do.
Thank you.
I also think it has something to do with the specs that the planning board imposes on the new subdivision roadways, though.
Yeah.
It's pretty high standard.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
One thing I just wanted to point out before Roger goes to the next slide is that our benchmarks and metrics sections of these presentations, we couldn't do benchmarks and metrics for everything that these departments do, so we picked some that lent themselves to visual presentation. I just don't want, you know, there are a lot of benchmarks and metrics that Roger and Harry and Carol are meeting, and anyway, this is just one.
So I'll leave that slide with this, just this one comment, I guess. 56% of our roads have been either resurfaced or reconstructed since, over the last decade. More than half of our roads have had significant attention.
And Roger, just, you know, we've covered this before, but it just sort of bears repeating. When you have a newly paved road and you have to kind of open it up, what does that do to the quality of the road?
It does, there's, we have a very basic saying, and that is that once you cut a road, irrespective of how appropriate you patch it, meaning no matter what you do, is never the same prior to cutting the road. It's just, that's just the way it is. There are a number of reasons for that, I won't get into, but it's just the way it is. So we, and I think for the most part, when we can control it, we've been pretty successful at preventing that. There have been some instances where we have not been, but we try very desperately to prevent that from happening.
Well, and I think that over the years as well, the establishment and the communication of the five-year moratorium, every year that gets better and better. And I think now, now that it's been in place as long as it has, it's got a lot more visibility, so it hopefully makes, you know, people aware so that homeowners aren't inconvenienced, but by the same token, the town's investment in its roads, you know, we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
How many miles, how much, what percentage of the gas mains you think we replaced?
Well, close to 85%, I would think, yeah.
Say that again, Harry?
85% of the gas main, I believe, has been replaced in Hingham.
Wow. Since, in how long?
Well, since 1970, I would say.
Wow.
Is that going to be a finished course from the center down to?
No, no. The lockout caused the work stoppage, so it never got completed.
Spring.
The main is in place and charged with gas, but all the service connections have to be completed. And we did approve of the main extending from High Street approximately up to another 800 feet. And we'll be meeting with them shortly and to discuss the next phase of operation, probably another mile or so of gas main.
Getting kind of late, isn't it?
Well, the biggest problem with doing work right now would be providing hot mix, but if they can come back and do service connections after existing main is put in, and just isolate little areas, like they can come back and patch it in the morning, that's what will probably allow them to do if the weather cooperates.
I.e. lack of precipitation in the form of white stuff. That would be hopeful.
When people come forth and request a permit, you know, outside the November 15th deadline, we generally, depending on what it is, if they can't wait till spring, we generally look at three-day weather windows to make that determination whether they're going to allow that permit to go forward or not. And so...
So December 15th is, that's just an old date in history now?
No, 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 not at all, but you know, someone comes in and goes, you know, my water service is failing, or something similar like that, or I, you know. Gas, new gas services, not necessarily, won't be beyond that unless they had like a couple dozen of them in Hingham that were going to be shut out for getting gas. We would look at three-day windows up to a certain point.
I see.
I mean, basically extreme circumstances, but as a rule.
After November 15th, not December 15th.
Yeah, it's November 15th.
So...
The asphalt plants generally stop making asphalt first of December, and they change over the plants to a different type of mix for the winter. So, and it gets more expensive, they don't want to open the road, so that's the catch.
So some key initiatives, I'll run through these quickly, stuff that we're currently work on, not all, but some. I guess Route 3A Design and Safety Improvements, again, working with 3A Task Force. The Inner Harbor Wall is a resiliency project, Harbor Walkway, and we'll have a picture of that shortly. The Bath House Concession Stand Building, which is underway right now, actually just completed the water tap last night. And the Derby Street Reconstruction, that's also underway. The town was, the town undertook the permitting and design, and now Mass starts paying for the work. The Gardner Street Intersection Reconstruction, again, we undertook the design and permitting. And, I'm sorry, we work with the state, they paid for the design and permitting, and that's scheduled to start in the spring of 2019. We continue to work on the South Hingham Economic Development with Town Administrator and other offices to facilitate that work, or that initiative as it comes forward. We continue to update and implement our five-year road building program. We undertake town building repairs and asset management. As I said, we acted as the OPM for the library roof structural, library roof structural stabilization and membrane and rooftop units, and replace, and we were the OPMs listed as the library, as part of the library expansion grant. So we're working, as I said, to possibly replace the Town Hall and School Department roof. We just completed a project at the South Shore Country Club, which added sewer to that building. We're working with the Lincoln School Building to help them on a window replacement project. And as I said earlier, we're working with the Hingham Maritime Center with their grant and the dock and float system at Barnes Wharf. In terms of, oops, I've got a slide missing here. I'll just read what I've got here. In terms of salaries and expenses...
It's after the pictures.
Oh, okay. So see, these are some of the projects, just to give you an illustration, the Harbor Walkway, the concession stand, Bath House Building, 3A Corridor, we've come to you, and this information is also online in detail. The Wharf Infrastructure, work that we've been doing now for a couple of years. And this is our breakdown of salaries and expenses. Salaries, $371,230. We have three full-time employees, one part-time administrative assistant, Carol, who works 20 hours a week. We have expenses of $301, those are directly, go directly into the roadwork. For example, $284,000 goes towards paving or paving or road-related work, $1,000 for advertising, $15,000... Fifteen thousand dollars for outside engineering services and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty for fuel. This funding doesn't include other state or special town-funded initiatives. So when money becomes available, whether it's a bond or Chapter 9, then, you know, we manage that work as well.
And then the additional requests, do you want to speak to the request for the...
Sure. So, you know, based on the presentation, I know that you have, the board has a sense of what we do, certainly. Except the town administrator has recommended three thousand, five hundred dollars increase in overtime. We really want seven thousand. And the reason is that you're asking us to do a lot. And a lot of the work that we do is at night. I can tell you that Tom and Harry do undertake a lot of this work at night. We're asked to attend a lot of meetings. I try to attend, as, you know, you see me there, I try to attend as much of those as I can. But for example, last, this week alone, we had Tom, who's hopefully home resting, had three nights of work this week alone, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to get that water connection. And you might ask, well, why are we doing that work at night? And it's two reasons. One is, for example, the work we're doing on 3A, the permit requires the work take place at night. The work that's taking place, for example, with the main street work or the micro-surfacing that needs to take place, you do not want this work done during the day. I think the disruption to the community and the traffic would be really bad. So we have, we have that type of work that requires us to be here, off-hours, odd-hours, and come in early and sometimes leave pretty late. And so the seven thousand dollars would help, help pay for some of the work that's put in front of us.
So if we jump back to page one eighty-six, which is the budget page for this department, the presentations that Roger was just reading the salaries and expenses from was a preliminary budget page. They've been, it's been updated to match the budget form. So just so you can see as I go through this. So the department request was, for two thousand and twenty was two seventy-eight, eight thirteen, with an additional request of seventy-four-ten, which my recommendation was thirty-five-hundred. The one, the reason that we, that it showed a negative on the, on the original town administrator recommendation form was if you look at line item fourteen oh fifty-two, five three oh three on that budget, which is the Architect and Engineering Services, this is the line that's commonly referred to as Selectman's Engineering Budget.
Yep.
A number of years ago, it had been placed in Roger's budget. And it just didn't seem to me that that was an appropriate place for it. It's, it's used almost exclusively for us, though Roger also uses it when needed for engineering, unforeseen engineering expenses. It's still fully, you know, will be used for the same purposes it always has been. I'm just trying to make the budgets represent their intended purpose and put them in the budgets that they're intended, the main intention is for. So that's all that is. It's a shift of nineteen thousand dollars.
And it was in your budget that came into our, so it started this, so...
Yeah, it's just back and forth.
I think your whole budget started in the Selectman, way back, way back, way back.
Same dollars, same use, different, different home. That's all.
And so the ultimate authority over the budget expenditures would be through the Board of Selectmen's Office?
That's right. And, and just to be clear, whenever Roger needed anything out of that budget, or if I needed, we always talked, and we will still. Just because we both recognize that we're going to have projects that we're going to need, and we communicate all the time. So that won't change either.
And how'd you land on thirty-five-hundred versus?
So the reason for that is, in last year's, in last year's budget discussions, Roger had asked for seventy-five-hundred, thereabouts, as well. Again, rightly pointing out that his department is doing a lot of night meetings. At the time, we were trying to limit the expenses, so we cut it in half. And I did that again this year, and the reason is, the reason I did it again this year is I'm looking at the total increase was, match was the original request from last year. And we'll see if that works. And if it still doesn't work next year, then we'll inch our way towards getting to the point where it's satisfying the need. And like everything, if we're really, if we're just short and we're just not able to get there because of some unforeseen number of meetings or whatever, we have, we have outs that we can use to fund those without increasing.
You know, I feel like, to your point, in other towns where the focus of town engineering may be on roadway construction, you know, I think there has, because of your expertise and your willingness to provide services more broadly, I think, I think it's, you know, a blessing and a curse to you, right? Because more people, I can't tell you the number of meetings I go to and people say, you know, we'll call Roger. And so I guess we get it, and I understand the rationale for the incremental increase. But it doesn't go unnoticed by us that, that, that your department is relied on really across town for that expertise.
I just want to say, just for clarification, so there's no confusion, the request we put in last year, we did not get.
Got half of it.
You didn't get any?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, you got thirty-five-hundred. Oh, maybe it was three thousand, but you got roughly half of it. We didn't show, I'll show you.
Yeah.
Right, we can, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, we can look at that. But, so, yeah, this, this would, and if we do, and we do run short, one thing that we've tried to do is sort of give real accounting of what we need. So if we don't have the money in our budget to pay for the overtime, we have to do a, you know, into department transfer. And so that seven thousand, four hundred and ten is not arbitrary at all. It's based on prior overtime that we've seen have to be transferred. So that was the number. We, okay, historically, this is what we've needed to cover the shortfall.
Okay. I mean, I do think it's essential to have that, your expertise built in at the front end of many of these processes because I think more than once you've been able to direct the process or the building or the construction in a way that satisfies the requirements and the needs of the town, so.
Roger, just kind of a question, because you're involved in so many of these projects. You know, there've been a number of articles that I've seen, both nationally and within Boston. It's my impression that in the last, like, two years, the construction costs, especially for the vertical construction, have, have really increased. I mean, this is your world. You're nodding your head.
You're spot on, yeah.
What, so just, I mean, not to put you on the spot, but like, if you were to say versus like two years ago or three years ago, how much of construction costs increased?
This might sound high, but I would, and I had this conversation, I think maybe even with John Ferris. I don't go into any project without carrying at least twenty percent, twenty-five percent.
Twenty, twenty-five percent contingency?
Yeah.
And, and so like, you know, I, the reason I'm asking is that, you know, as you know, we have a number of capital projects under consideration for the town, and a lot of them are these, you know, these vertical projects. So, you know, we've got some preliminary estimates that people have given us from, you know, a couple of years ago. I'm just, you know, I'm trying to get a handle on the sort of, both the shelf life and whether, as, as we're looking at projects, whether, whether the cost estimates that we have are current or whether like they need to be refreshed.
That's a good point.
What, you know?
So we, where we do the library, just for example, you know, initially, we, there was a pretty heavy contingency carried in that project. And normally, you know, you would look at that and say, and that's, but that is not, so we'd have to look at those again. But that, there was enough, for example, on that particular project where I think will be okay. But there are other projects that we will have to look at, for example, maybe the inner harbor walls, if that comes up.
Right.
That might be a project where we might need, and it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a ten million dollar project, we might, we might need, you know, eleven million dollars. That's twenty, that's ten percent.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's the reality of the market right now.
Yeah. So I know, like, for the, for the harbor walls, I think the harbor development has gotten some preliminary quotes, like, within the last six to nine months. So I'm just sort of thinking ahead that, you know, let's say it's two or three years down the road when we want to go, you know, and perhaps do the work. Would we want to, like, refresh that quote? Would we want to?
You would.
You know, I'm just, because I, okay, that's some...
I think you're, I think you're spot on. We definitely would, because there's nothing worse. I can tell you, we're dealing with this in the bath house.
Yeah.
We had professional estimates. We look at the numbers ourselves. We ran the number. Then you come back and there's consensus, and then the bids come in, and you really, I mean, you want to puke. I mean, it's like, oh my God, what happened? And it isn't the one-off.
How do you control it?
You have several contractors bidding the job, and every one of them is high. And they tell you, you know, pretty candid. We're fortunate that, you know, you can pick up the phone, hey, what's going on? And they, well, you know, it's a smaller job, we've got to mobilize, I've got another job that's five times the size. The margins are different. I got to, if I'm going to move to this, this place, you know, the margins got to be worth it for me.
Yeah, there's certain fixed costs that...
Certain fixed costs.
Well, and I just look in, I also think there's also supply and demand. I mean, every time you drive into Boston, you know, the number of cranes in the sky and the amount of building that's taking place, just, you know, in the Boston and suburban area is significant. So I got to believe that as, as demand has increased, supply has probably not kept pace. Thank you. I would just say, you know, it's, I appreciate the presentation, and I hope the, the members of the audience who are viewing this see the totality and the full body of the work that you do. I mean, in a lot of cases, we have meetings and, you know, we meet with the Harbor Development Committee and, you know, Roger comes in to talk about it. I would say with, with sort of every major infrastructure project that we have in town, either you or Harry or Tom is, is somewhere in the room. And I appreciate the presentation tonight that shows just the totality of everything that your department touches. And I would also just say that, you know, yours is a group that you, you deal with, you represent Hingham to people outside Hingham, you know, more than a lot of departments. So whether that's interacting with the state, interacting with other communities, interacting with the utility companies. And I think that's a facet of your job that you do very well. And I would just thank you for representing the town of Hingham in the very professional way that you do.
I've traveled to hello for Roger and Harry.
Did you make him go in first?
On multiple occasions, in fact, and he is indeed a good ambassador for our community. I appreciate the fact that you not only work with the permitting boards, both of you, but you serve to educate and teach so that we have an actual understanding of the things that we're grappling with. And that's invaluable. And I'm not sure that that goes on in other communities, but I'm just grateful it happens here. Because, you know, I try to make decisions in areas that frankly, you know, I wasn't, it's not my training and what I do for a living, but I try as hard as I can to get it right. And couldn't do it without you guys. I mean, you didn't put the traffic committee on there as part of your responsibilities as well.
Right, right.
But I know you're out there at the night meetings. I mean, we've sat through enough night meetings together, so I don't need to belabor the point that my colleagues have both made so well and fulsomely, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just say one, real quick, things I try to do every year, I want to, as the department head, I want to thank people that work for me. I said, I've got a really, really good crew. Harry is, you know, it's nothing better to be able to go to work and not worry about certain aspects, kind of just he takes care of it, or Carol takes care of it. And it's a, it's kind of like a Jesus kind of feel in the office all the time, but things seem to work out. And we, we have the occasional, more than the occasional laugh, and when we get a chance, we pick on Tom as the new guy. Like, these, these people work exceptionally hard, and the passion for this community is second to none, I think. So I want to thank them publicly as a department.
And the coordination with your colleague in the back of the room is also really strong, and that, that's helpful too, and appreciated.
While we have you here, we're going to do the vote on the, oh, great, thank you. Mass pavement reclamation, Inc.
I have a motion?
Yeah, for sure.
I make a motion to approve the contract extension with mass pavement reclamation for equipment rental and labor services slash BIS hashtag equip eighteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
You're happy with these guys?
We are. Yep.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And as we wind along, we're going to invite the Department of Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Sylvester. How are you, sir?
Steve.
The other Mr. Sylvester.
Okay. So Randy Sylvester is here, representing three departmental budgets, Public Works, Landfill Recycling, and the Sewer Department. If we start at the beginning of our books, at page Roman numeral eleven. Item four twenty under Public Works and Facilities is the Highway Recreation and Tree and Park budget. The total recommended budget, or requested budget by the department head is three million, six hundred, fifteen thousand, eight hundred, ninety-one dollars, with an additional request of ninety-six thousand, three hundred, forty-seven dollars. My additional recommendation of fifty thousand dollars brings my total recommended budget to three million, six hundred, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred, ninety-one dollars. If you jump ahead to page eleven of the public, excuse me, page two hundred and one is the Public Works budget. I will explain just very briefly the, the additional request and the discrepancy there. It's a, it's a little complicated. So Randy, and he could speak to this, a touch at the end. Randy has requested an assistant department head. That's the additional request from him at ninety-six thousand, three hundred, forty-seven dollars for a number of reasons of which he and I have discussed. I am not recommending that, that number. However, I am adding fifty thousand dollars, and that's here, supplemental page for his presentation. And that is for the snow removal budget. So given that, if you jump ahead to page... Two thirteen is the beginning of the budget, of the presentation that Randy will now walk us through.
Okay. It's the right arrow on there. The right arrow.
Well, you got to have the, you can have a hard push boom.
We'll start off with the Highway Division. The Public Works is, has many divisions. Highway, which incorporates Tree and Park. We also have Transfer Station and the Sewer Department. So the Highway Division maintains all the infrastructure in town, such as the road, roads, sidewalks, catch basins, drainage structures, town vehicle fleet, all the equipment, pavement marking, street signage, street sweepings, traffic lights, and the waterfront property. They also, the Highway Division is also responsible for all the snow removal, snow plowing, sanding, or I should say treading of the roads, because we don't sand much anymore. We also manage a good portion of the Phase Two Stormwater Program, which is EPA mandated. And this program is the, is a program that the EPA is putting forth to clean up the storm water that goes into the drains and into the, into the waterways. Hingham Harbor is considered, and some of the waterways do have bacteria in them and some pathogens. And the testing has gone on from years ago. We're, we're in a program right now that we're trying to get new testing, because we've done a lot of work. Roger's done a lot of work, the town's done a lot of work, straightening out the town, the town brook and whatnot to help those, those issues. But we are mandated by the EPA to do certain things, such as locate and map and clean all the drainage structures. This is going to be a monumental task. Although we do clean the structures all the time, we're in the, we're probably fifty percent of locating all the pipes and the catch basins, and all those go onto a map. This year, there's a, there's a new requirement of an illicit discharge program. And what that is, is we have to go test all the outfalls, inspect and test all the outfalls for the whole drainage system and test it for... for the whole drainage system and test it for certain parameters such as pH, turbidity, um, phosphates, to find out if there's any cross connections in the system or if someone's dumping their, their, uh, septic system into the drainage system. Um, and would have to go out and, we're gonna have to train personnel or hire, um, an engineer and get the testing equipment and kits, um, and would have to go out and test those on a regular basis at least once a year in wet weather and, and dry weather.
And from those outflows, then you try to trace back to the source of them?
And from that, so if we get an illicit discharge, then we're in the process right now of creating the program of what we're gonna do. What we'll do is we'll go back in the drainage system and we will test the, all the tributaries into it, such as catch basins, find out where those are from. We're also, uh, I have a, uh, in the, in the program, we're going to camera all the lines and find out, number one, the condition of the lines, and if there is an illicit discharge, where it's coming from. So there, the program's being developed now. In the past, I mean, the Phase Two Stormwater has been going on since, I think, two thousand and three. Um, they've tried to update the program every five years. This is the second update. Um, it's like fifteen years late, but these are, are the requirements.
Does an illicit discharge include pumping out a basement that floods into a catch basin?
Not necessarily. Um, it's more like, uh...
Because I've seen pipes from houses going into catch basins and, um...
There are that, that is illegal.
Okay.
Um, for the reason that, especially this time of year, the road gets wet, cars go through it, they, they put water all over the road, gets cold at night, and then it becomes a dangerous situation. As we find them, um, we will go talk to them, and if there's nothing done about it, then we have to get the police involved. Um, the illicit discharges are basic, basically septic systems or, or, uh, washing machines tied in, and that's where you're getting your surfactants and your phosphates and you do a, a number of tests, your turbidity.
Drain washing machines into catch basins?
Uh, we have, in the, in the last inspection, we did find one, yes. Um, we were only required to go through it on one, one time totally and do it during dry weather testing. They changed requirements to dry weather test and wet weather test. So we're gonna have two sets of results to a number of catch basins, I mean, outfalls where...
Well, if you identify the basin, then you eyeball, see where the, uh, the illicit discharge is coming from, is that how you do it?
That's basically how we're gonna do it, and, and, in, in the program, we're going to, um, add the cammering, so video, video it and find out exactly where it's coming from.
Just from sheet flow into a basin?
No, it's, some are actually piped in, believe it or not.
That's not accidental.
No.
Excuse me.
So that is going to be a significant cost increase, and, and the estimates are approximately twenty-five dollars, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, because when we find all the, it's a five-year program and we're required to do certain things in every year. Um, and it's, the estimates are telling me that each year it's going to be a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. And I will bring that back to you when necessary. Because, and honestly, one of the, one of the items, it's gonna be costly, hopefully not, but once we go through this testing, we're gonna have to, we're, we're required, mandated to, um, put in a structure, a water quality structure of some type to take care of the water quality that we have found, so...
So Randy, is this, is, is this initiative, I know we haven't gotten to the numbers yet, but is this reflected in the budget or is this something that's coming for which there will be additional budget dollars required?
Last year I did get an increase to cover, to cover the initial costs.
Okay.
Which we have to, this year is the year it started, so we have to put the plan together, we have to submit it to the, uh, to the EPA. It's called an NOI, Notice of Intent. They say yea or nay, we give them the plan of what we're going to do, and then we have to implement it. And each year has so many things that we have to implement. Some things have three years to get done, some have one year, and so on down the...
Are there penalties for non-compliance?
If we have it in our regulations. And I've been working with planning to change or, uh, get the regulations a little bit stronger so we have more teeth. Now, let me explain it. The stormwater program, Phase Two Stormwater, is not just the DPW. It's conservation, it's planning, it's, um, it's all the departments working together, because there's different facets of it. One is erosion control, which is handled by conservation. Zoning, which is handled by, uh, zoning, but planning as far as new developments.
And used in development.
You were gonna say that.
So we're, we're, we're trying to work together, and there, there are a number of, um, best practices they want you to put into place.
Yep.
Uh, we're already doing a number of them, but they're, they're coming up with more and more, and more stringent, such as sweet sweepings, you just can't do anything with them anymore.
Rooms.
Uh, you have to get rid of them in a certain manner. Catch basin cleanings, the same way.
They putting any money where their mouth is on this stuff, or is this is all locally funded?
No, they do not.
Yeah, I love that.
There's been numerous court cases, that's why it's taken this long.
Okay.
And a number of objections. They have had fines in other states, significant fines in other towns. I, I suggest that we adhere to it as best we can.
Do the catch basin designs need to be updated in the planning board rules and regulations going forward?
I don't think that's the case, but in certain cases, it, um, depending on what the catch basin is going to take in, you, it may require a water quality structure.
With a vacuum component?
Well, the vac, no, the only vac, the only vacuum component would be to clean it out, because that's the only way you can do it.
Which you'd rent.
We rent it. A vacuum would be, it's way too costly and it, it's a night, maintenance nightmare.
Would there be, um, a way to impose fines for folk, on folks who violate the rules?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you, you gotta, well, whatever.
I imagine there is, but I, I don't have that authority.
It's, I mean, this is a very expensive, I, look, I'm all for it, but it's a very expensive...
To be honest with you, some, some communities, and I don't suggest this, but some communities are looking at a stormwater utility and have gone to a stormwater utility where they pay, there's different ways of doing it, but one is for all the impervious area or pavement, they pay a certain fee for that, and it goes into their stormwater utility.
Is it prospective, or is it simply a fee imposed?
It depends how it's designed. I, I, I think that we have covered what we need to cover, and, um, we'll see on the upcoming years.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I have probably about a hundred thousand dollars right now going into this, into this program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, catch basin cleanings and street sweepings per year is probably anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars to get rid of, and that's with good prices, which I go to several companies to get.
They bury it?
The, the prices do vary. It's mainly on truck.
They bury, do they bury?
Oh, they bury it, they usually landfill it.
So, so you're suggesting that, that the work, the work that we have to do in the upcoming year, you think is reflected in your budget, but as this plan gets put together, the town may have a much more significant liability.
Correct.
Depending on what the plan looks like and how quickly, what, what the timeframe is for implementing. You know, Tom, one, one thing we might want to do, and I'm sort of thinking about, like, after the budget process and as this unfolds, this, this is something that could have a significant impact on, on the town's budget and on resources and, you know, where, where perhaps, you know, I think we saw Lonnie the other day, and some of this kind of gets absorbed into her budget. There, there'll reach a point where the work required to, to maintain compliance is gonna require bigger effort, so we may want to get an update on this during the year as, as this unfolds so that we can get a sense of what's coming, when it's coming, and what the resource and budgetary implications are.
Right.
Yep. Agreed. Is there gonna be special training needed for the folks?
Um, not necessarily special training. If, if we end up doing the, the testing ourselves, I'll probably have an engineering firm come in and take some of our guys out. They actually come and, they, you can do it in kits, you do have to do bacteria analysis, which is a special procedure on bacteria sampling, um, and would have to bring it to a lab for the results, but, um, there's nothing really special right now. We will have to contract camera crews, video crews to do that. We have them on a contract with the Sewer Department now, so we do have those resources available to us.
And this is strictly for public ways only?
Public ways.
Not, not private ways?
Not private ways, unless it goes into our system.
Okay.
Then they're responsible.
So that the homeowners on the private way will be responsible for a fix if it compromised the public drainage system?
I would say yes.
Sure.
I would say yes.
Just check.
Or we'll un-pipe it.
Yeah, I see how that goes.
Those, yeah, those are the big topics for highway. The other thing, we also, we, we support public events, fireworks, Fourth of July Parade, touch truck events, Christmas is in the square, Taste of Hingham, things like that, we're doing that all the time. That's where a significant part of my overtime budget goes.
Mm-hmm.
Just to let you know.
Yep.
Um, probably a good twenty-five to thirty percent is spent within the first couple weeks of July with those events.
You were gonna have the parade, man.
I, I, I agree.
Well, and come on, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing like the parade ends and your guys are right behind the parade, and it's like, it never happened.
Yeah, I love that.
It's unbelievable.
I love it, that's great stuff.
So the next slide is, um, Tree and Park. Tree and Park maintains all the islands, parks, athletic fields, public ground, buildings, grounds, uh, the memorials, um, a lot, a lot of what Keith does, we help out quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
Doing some plantings with him and, and for him. We do the maintenance down at Hingham Harbor, uh, the town forest, and all the conservation lands when, when necessary, and they, they ask us. Uh, that's like cutting of the dams, any trees that come down, then we'll go in and take care of it. Uh, we ma, Tree and Park maintains all the public shade trees in town that are in the town layout, um, tree plantings, uh, they do all the tree plantings and removals, and committee support, uh, beautification committee, shade tree committee, garden club, uh, not Cleaner Greener Hingham, that's, that, that's supposed to be in Transfer Station? That's the recycling committee? So that's Tree and Park.
So before we go on to the, to the next page, I just want to jump back to page eleven in the front of your book. I can give you the landfill and recycling budget summary.
While you're doing that, I'd just like to take note of the work that the Tree and Park does. I think they do a great job.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It's nice to see.
Lot of work.
Yeah, lot of trees, lot of trees. Okay, Mr. Towne Ministry.
So the landfill and recycling budget request was one million four hundred sixty-five thousand forty-six dollars with a total, um, recommendation by me of the same for an eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighteen dollar increase, or a six point two five percent increase over last year.
Key points of the Transfer, Transfer Station is, it's open ten hours a day, Thursday through Sundays, as you all know. Upwards of seven to eight thousand vehicle visits per week.
Wow.
Which seems to be going up. Last week, I think, was in eighty-three hundred vehicle range in those four days. We process and transport all the trash and the recyclers for the town, um, process yard waste, electronics, uh, construction debris, all the metals. We have a scale operation for commercial materials, which, which at this point, we, um, the revenue is about a hundred thousand dollars a year from the scale, we're getting pretty close to that. And of course, the Transfer Station runs a swap shop.
That's awesome success, I have to say.
I'm surprised that wasn't your first bullet.
I see all my friends up there. A lot of business done up there, man.
Yes, there is, a lot of business.
A lot of business.
I am, I am going to get them another container to take some of that through, through, um, through our grants from the DEP, which I can go through later, but...
Can I make an observation?
Can I make an observation?
Of the dump?
Transfer Station?
You can call it the Transfer Station, I'll call it the... That's where I started work for the town when I was a kid, and, you know, as I sat there in the queue to, to go with my recycling, it's getting really, really crowded up there.
Mm-hmm.
Circulation is becoming much more of a challenge, and parking, and people adhering to the programs. Is there any room to expand up there?
There really, really isn't. Um, we're utilizing pretty much every square foot of footprint. Um, the DEP was kind enough to give us the, the...
Opening another day to kind of take the volume out on the days that it is open, or is that just...
Well, honestly, the Thursdays and Fridays are not that busy.
Yeah.
The volume of the, the volume of the traffic, volume of the traffic is, is Saturdays and Sundays.
Right.
And it's lined out on Holon Street.
Last hour.
And that's, that's pretty much what I hear from all the towns, that, that's Saturday and Sunday, so they're, they're big days.
Randy, one question that I sometimes get from people is whether the town would ever consider going to single stream recycling. And, and I think people talk about, you know, the fact that some of the private trash services, when they offer the recycling, you know, everybody pretty much puts, puts, puts all their stuff in one bin and...
I'll, I'll, I'll stop you there.
Yes.
Um, the answer is no. And the, the simple reason is, is that the idea when they went to single stream and put everything into one bin, and it was a, it was a good idea at the time, um, they had outlets for that material, and the quality of the material didn't matter much from these people that were taking it in, and I'll, China was one of them. He, they took a good portion, if not the majority of all the materials shipped out of, and China was, in my estimation, was getting the raw end of the deal because there was more contaminants than there was recycled material. So they get sick of it, put in, put a policy in, I think it was last year, a year and a half ago, called National Sword, which allowed only, I think it was, it's point five percent contamination in their recycling material that they're gonna take, which basically cut it off, cut that off totally. And what that made... And what that made, everyone who went to single stream and were actually getting paid $5 a ton for it at the time, are now paying anywhere from 30, which is cheap, to 60, to maybe 80 dollars a ton for that same service. And all the, all the towns, especially the drop-off towns that went to the single stream mode, they might have got more material, but they weren't able to get rid of it as good now. And they are now converting all back. Duxbury is one, I think Situate is another, but.
Thank you, it's, that's, that's a helpful explanation for us and hopefully too for people watching.
Have we ever had our stuff rejected because it's contaminated?
We have not. We have not. What we do is, as everyone knows, we. Well, we do public education, there's signs everywhere, and I hope everyone reads them at least once. But, we, we separate all the recyclables. Glasses in the glass area, plastics in the plastics area, cardboard in the cardboard, paper in the paper, and so on, so on, so on. When we do this, and this is the reason I never went to single stream, is that it's, it's a commodity. And we were getting actually good money back. When they were getting $5 a ton, I was getting $50 a ton, or even more. Cardboard was anywhere up to almost $200 a ton at one time. Now it's, it's down in the $80 a ton, but we're still getting paid for it. Now, if that was in a single stream, recycling stream, we would not be getting paid, but we'd be asking them, you know, paying for them to get rid of it. Now today, because of this policy, and there's no outlets for all these recyclables, where we used to get paid for paper, $20 a ton, $10 a ton, we are now paying $30 a ton for them to take out recycled paper. And this is happening not only for paper, plastics, we are still getting metal for tin and metal, glass.
Do we pay more though for straight rubbish?
No, we're not.
More than the $30?
It's, well, it's more than $30. It's $83, $84 a ton to get rid of it, plus the shipping costs.
So we're still ahead, even though we're.
We're ahead right now.
Recycling is still a valuable thing to do.
Yes.
Where it's costing us less to get rid of our recycling.
Absolutely. But from years, from years prior, it, the costs have, it's not free to recycle anymore. It's a, it's a cost, you defer the costs elsewhere, especially in the trash. This trash does cost. I mean, that's up in the $80, $85 a ton, we're getting it to the facility to take care of it.
Do those commercial haulers that I see around town, do they come in in the dump, or do they go?
They do not. In order to utilize our facility, it has to be a certain size, or I shouldn't say under certain size. There's only one hauler that, 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 well, some commercial guys do come in. They come in in pickups and whatnot, and they go over the scale. And one commercial hauler does the same thing. But his trucks are of that size which we can actually take. We can't take the big packers out there. Those are not acceptable, unless they're going to the yard waste area, but.
The appliances and everything, scrap metal?
Scrap metal, yes.
And the books, what's the deal with the books?
Books, we do have a vendor.
Okay.
They are paying us minimally. We've been, we've been, I've been trying to get as much money in the revenue stream as I can. But books, book recycling has been, the book recyclers have been fading out. We've already had, I would say, three vendors, and now we're on our fourth. These guys seem pretty reliable, they're out of Boston, they're a charitable organization, so they're coming in and actually taking our books.
Do they, do they reuse them, or do they grind them all up and make?
No, they, they resell them and use them, they donate to schools and charities. And then they do recycle the paper and whatever, they, they try to make as much money as they can.
And the clothes bins, which always seem to be perpetually full, do they come in?
That's once a week. All of them come in once a week. Yeah, we do, I think it was near 60 ton of clothes last year. And, and we are receiving $100 a ton for those clothes from some vendors.
All?
Not all of them. I'm trying.
Well, don't try too hard, because.
Well, I have, I have.
I shouldn't say that, but.
I have vendors.
You left St. Vincent de Paul there, I noticed.
Yes. I have vendors soliciting me all the time to get into the Transfer Station. Some that have been there, and I did not like their service. And I get rid of them, and I would prefer them not to put a container into our facility. I try to keep, and Steve Messenger, who does a great job, we try to keep a handle on that so it doesn't get out of hand.
In terms of the leaves and everything, do you make that in a compost, is that, is that what's going?
All the yard waste is composted.
And that's used on the beds of the islands and stuff you maintain, or?
Yes, what we do, we have, we have windrows of it, thousands of cubic yards. A lot of it goes down and residents take it.
Sure, I've seen that.
Yep.
Very generous.
Probably three to 12 cubic yards a day, people take that.
Down by the swap shop?
Yes. We fill that two or three times a day.
Wow.
On busy days, it wouldn't be today, but.
Plus sand, right?
Sand is up top, yes, with salt. So what we do is, we'll grind the leaves and grass together, and then we put them in windrows and compost them, and turn them over periodically. We'll put the windrows together to create bigger windrows, to give us room.
Is that out back?
That's up back, behind the wall, and then, and that's on the cap. That's, the DEP gave us permit to utilize that area like that, so that's, that's what we do.
What do you do with the big brush?
Brush is, is, it grind, we grind it. Again, there was one time that we would get paid for it, or not have to pay to get rid of it. That time has ended, mainly because the paper plants and whatnot up north are not there anymore. So, recycling companies such as New England Recycling, and there's a few others out there, they will take it at a cost. We utilize Social Recycling Cooperative, they do a contract, they bid it out for us. And in that, in that bid, there's a, there's a cost to get rid of it. So it's anywhere from $5 a ton to $2 a ton, depending what it is.
It can't be composted?
It can, but our facility, actually for what we do and our footprint, to do it, is, our footprint is really small. So we can't really compost wood chips. We, we, we keep piles in certain areas which break down over, and we use them when we, when we can. But, we don't, we mostly will look for vendors that want compost, and maybe they come in and they'll, they'll pay us $3 cubic yard. But at times, we do have to pay to get rid of it.
Randy, when, when, when you collect money from these vendors for different things, is your budget a net budget, or does the money that you collect come in somewhere else?
All the money we collect goes, goes to the general fund.
Okay.
I operate off the budget that I put in.
Yep, yep. I just would be interested in, I'm just curious as to.
The revenues?
Yeah, I think you do a great job in terms of trying to, you know, trying to bring revenue in through what you do. And in particular, you know, you've, you've got the cost over here, but there's revenue that you're generating on behalf of the town, and it just would be, that would be good to maybe follow up on. You know, similar to, you know, the fire department has the ambulance fees, the harbor master has the mooring fees.
How are you doing on making sure that non-residents aren't using the dump?
We're diligent in checking stickers. We, we change the stickers every year. And residents have to come in and change it according to their license plate, last number on their license plate correlates with the month, just so everybody knows. If they're commercial plates, they have to come in November, December, from the beginning of the year. Or vanity plates, and we track that, so we know who's out there that need to be changed out. And we are open once a month on the second Saturday of every month from 8 to 12. Four people to come in, give them another time, not during business hours, to come in and, and utilize our services, and we can change out this sticker and whatnot.
So you don't have people there, like going around saying, hey, where's your sticker?
I do occasionally, but yes, our, the attendants, the attendants are watching for this type of stuff on a regular basis. And if anyone sees something out of line, then please give us a call and, or notify a tenant. And there is a program where I'll send them a letter saying that they have to get this done. It's a first violation of friendly reminder, second one, they have to come in.
Not so friendly.
Less friendly.
Not so friendly.
Yeah, and then the third one, well, we take the, we'll take the, their privileges away, which it is a privilege to use a transfer station for one year. Unless they want to.
That'd be a big hit.
Yeah.
It would. I've not had to do that yet, but very close.
What do you think is the biggest driver in the, in the increase for the Transfer Station? Is it mainly wages? Like what's the biggest couple in?
I think the biggest increase through the last couple of years is, well, one, the wages, but the other one is the recycling, because it's going opposite of what it had been.
Yep, okay.
I mean, honestly, my budget in the Transfer Station, since I took this over, has gone down steadily, and now it's back on the rise because of it.
And how many people typically staff the Transfer Station?
We have eight full-time staff up there. And then we have two part-timers in the office on Thursdays and Fridays to deal with stickers and things of that nature.
I think they do a good job, Randy, seriously. I mean, I'm up there at least once a week, and they do it very well, so.
Thank you.
My compliments.
They do a good job.
They do. They do.
Move on.
If we jump back again to page Roman numeral, Roman numeral 12. Randy's last budget to present is the sewer department. This is, the departmental recommendation was for $3,225,597. I'm recommending the same for a total increase of $225,448 or 7.51 percent.
So the next budget is the DPW sewer budget. Provide sewer to 2,500 residence businesses in the North Sewer District, and 180 residents and businesses in the where sewer, where, River Sewer District. Maintain about 30 miles of sewer pipe, including 30 pumping stations, 13 pumping stations. We manage the billing, sewer billing and customer service. An infiltration and inflow program, which is, just since I said that, is the water that's in the ground getting into the pipes, which we then have to pump and treat to get to the MWRA or hull, which then we're getting charged on. We have an infiltration, an I and I program for short, where we go out and do a number of things. We're trying to camera the whole system, we've done probably 80 percent of it. We also do smoke testing to find cross connections. And then what we get is.
What do you mean by that?
Cross connections?
Yeah.
Well, smoke testing, what, what, how we do that is, they'll, they'll take a manhole, and they'll know the area, and what they do is they take a non-hazardous smoke tablet.
See where it goes?
And then they take a fan and force it into the system. And then usually, and we found several of these, is we'll find like a roof drain tied in. So smoke, smoke coming out of the roof. So we, we'll do that and let it sit, and then we just look around to see if there's any. I mean, they'll come out of their sewer vents, but then if it's coming out of their, you know, out of, usually roof drains, or some have drains in the driveway, we found several of those, and.
Commercial are you talking about, or is this private?
Private. So what happens is, and we, we see a tremendous influx of pumpage when it rains. It goes up probably twice, twice the amount of pumpage, if not more. Our stations go from operating, say about 20 times a day, to going 24 hours a day. And this lasts for, for days until it rain ends, and then it's another day or two after that, which takes a tremendous toll on, on the station and the equipment. Not to mention that it hits the budget pretty hard. So we're in a, what we're going to do, and I have it in the other slide, but there's also sump pumps from people's basements that are hooked into the septic system. We have a, we're going to go through, we've been doing this, an inspection program.
When you say septic, not to interrupt, it's not septic.
No, it's sewer, the town sewer, I'm sorry. But if, but if they have a sump pump to alleviate the water in their basement, and it's going into the sewer system, then that's another, that's called inflow.
That's un-metered.
And that's un-metered. And that's, that's part of it also. A lot of this is inflow, which is coming from people's sump pumps and roof drains and driveway drains. And, and we did find some catch basins tied in, or there was breaks in the pipe near catch basins, which are now, you know, we fixed that. And there's some stuff that obviously happens. But we do have an inspection program. We're devising a letter, we've done it the last couple of years, but we're devising a letter to go out there and start doing it again. We do have a right to get in, and I hope everyone, you know, will try to make an appointment so we can go in and inspect and, because we, this is a big costly problem, and we. Well, when they sign up, there is regulations saying that we have a right to go in and inspect their system. It's in the sewer rules, and so.
I'm curious.
We're trying to figure that out, if it comes down to where we have to hire a detail to go around with us, to people that, which I don't want to do. I would, I would hope it would be voluntary, voluntary, but.
Avoid disturbance.
This is a, it's a, it's a unbelievable toll on, on the system. And it's not just in Hangham, it's in, it's everywhere. We're, we're a little bit ahead of the curve, but it is a big problem everywhere. Because the, the system wasn't designed, I mean, these pipes were put in 60, 70 years ago. And they're a clay pipe, and they, they just butt it up against each other. So they didn't care, really, it just went out to the ocean, and it didn't matter if a little rainwater got in there. But now it's, you know, with the rules and regulations that we have to follow, and it's costing money to pump it from here, going through the, going to MWRA, and then they meter it. And it's hard when our water bills are a third of what we're pumping through MWRA.
So it doesn't match, right?
It does not match. It's about a third.
That's.
That's a killer.
So it's, it's, it's a lot of cost.
And is there some fraction of this, because the pipes are clay, that there's some infiltration in the pipe itself?
Yes, and that's what we're, that's why we camera the pipes, we find all the deficiencies, and we'll go in and align those particular pipes. They're rated out, they're rated out on gallons, basically, gallons per minute. So all the higher ones, we take care of first, so.
Internally line a clay pipe?
Yes, yes.
Does it reduce its efficiency in terms of?
It does not. It's like a fiberglass lining, that, what they do is they block up from man to hole in a manhole, and they throw, they put a camera through, and behind it they pull a fiberglass lining, and they blow up a balloon, and it goes. up a balloon, and it goes up against the pipe, and it cures.
Okay.
And then it's done.
Huh.
How long is that good?
They can actually do laterals, too. So...
Wow.
So they can turn and do the same thing up laterals.
That's amazing. Wow.
And it's costly. But we... The MWRA, we do get a grant loan from them, 7525. And this year, we've spent over a million dollars in the last couple of years on this program. This year, last year, they didn't fund it, but the Sewer Commission funded 200,000, so we continued the program. And I put into the budget 100,000 a year, in case the MWRA doesn't fund it. We do have to funds, funds. But they put up about 375,000 this year. So we have to put up, I think it's around 100,000 to match theirs. It's a little under 100,000.
How long is that good for?
Until we spend it.
No lining the pipes with fiberglass. How long would you extend the life of the pipe?
Another 30 years?
Okay.
You might be off the board by then, who knows?
Just checking.
So...
So what percentage of the system has been lined?
We're not doing all the pipes, just the necessary ones. Yeah, because it's a costly proposition. So I would say, from the areas that we've camered and videoed, it's probably about 20%.
They only have problems on 3A. Is that lined, or is that a different...
3A is not lined. Well, 3A is... 3A is our major main trunk line going up. And that's why we rerouted Bradley Woods Station. That was all the construction over the summer.
Right.
Because what was happening is, that's a forced main, meaning there's... The water's forced through it, and there's always pressure in there, like a water main. So there was a T in it where Bradley Woods came in, when Bradley Woods Station came in. So it's the same... And this is a timing thing, but if the pumps turn on at the same time, and they converge, it... What... And this happens in the water industry, and that's why you get water main breaks at certain times. But what happens is the water converges and causes what's called a water hammer. So you have basically this water hammer, or energy going down the line, and if there's a weak spot in that, that will crack the pipe. And that's happened since I took it over, 2010, I believe. And that's happened twice. And on that line, it's a major, major project to get it done, to get it repaired. We had to close down 3A, a portion of it, dig it up, and that's a large pipe. I believe it's a 24-inch pipe.
Was the work that was done over Bradley Woods calculated to alleviate that problem?
Yes. So the reason I'm telling you this, I could off-track a little bit, but Bradley Woods, we changed the location, and that's... It's still forced, but it goes into a manhole where the other forced main dumps in soup. So it's going into atmosphere, the two of them going into atmosphere. There's no water hammer, less likely a water sewer break down the road. That's the reason why.
That's all precast?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's the reason for that construction.
Good to know.
Where are we in the amount we're carrying for the inter-municipal agreement with HALL? Is that just a... It's usually a ballpark, right? They come in...
That's a ballpark.
Okay.
I called them several times for the budget cycle, and I don't... I mean, if I go by what they say, I'm fearful that I won't be high enough.
Yep.
Because I did it one year, and it was...
Yeah, I remember that. Yep. Yep. And this is... And is this budget... Is this budget all ratepayer supported?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to mention, just for the benefit of the viewing audience, you know, we're going through this budget. The advisory committee recommends it, but if you're a Hingham taxpayer and you don't have sewer service, all the services and the costs associated with this work, that doesn't affect you in any way. The way that we've set this up is that, basically, all of the costs that are borne by the sewer customers, who we call the ratepayers, that all gets paid for through the sewer rates. And so the Sewer Commission sets the rates. They handle all of, you know, Randy's team handles all of the billing, the customer service. Essentially, this is a town operated utility. It is 100% ratepayer funded. That also includes any of the capital. So, you know, later on, we'll hear a capital outlay presentation. Any capital outlay, any debt that's in the debt schedule that's related to sewer, all that is borne by the ratepayers. That's how this is set up.
So last two things here, we have fats, oils, we call a fog program. That's to keep the fats and oils congealing in the lines, causing maintenance problems. We also have a system-wide asset management program. So we go through all the stations, the pipes, whatnot, and we have a capital plan. It's a fiber capital plan, and I go through it, and we devise what we need in future Benchmarks and metrics, the whole department. We maintain 140 miles of public roads, 100 miles of drain lines, 60 miles of sidewalks, 10,000 drainage structures, which we were discussing before, 10,000-plus public shade trees. We average plantings about 80 a year. We have around 380 removals per year, and about 3,300 prunings. We go around prune about 3,300 trees, and that's in one year. So we're pretty busy.
And I just mentioned, going into the winter, that for... We've gotten very spoiled here in Hingham, that during winter events, the lights don't go out in Hingham. And that is a real... That is due to, obviously, the wonderful job that Hingham Light does. But Randy and his team play a pivotal role in pruning all these trees during the year. So they don't wait until there's a problem. They go out and they take proactive measures. And, you know, our lights are on, and we have heat in the winter, thanks largely to those 3,300 prunings that happen every year.
We have, and this is an average, about 80 pieces of snow removal equipment. That can get up to 100, depending on the storm. Thirty... We have 3,100 traffic signs that we have to maintain, and five sets of signal lights that we maintain.
How's your sidewalk clearer? Your new sidewalk clearer?
This sidewalk plow?
Yeah.
It's good. It also cuts pavement, so...
Oh, that's even better.
We utilize it in various ways.
Does it have a broom attachment?
Has a... Yeah. Has a grinding attachment.
A broom attachment?
It does have a broom attachment. Correct.
Can the selectmen do ride-alongs on that?
It's got a spatula, scissors.
Not much room.
I would just say, Randy, and, you know, you're always very kind when I contact you. I live near the Hingham Middle School, and I really do appreciate the effort made to clear that, because you got a lot of kids that are walking to school and that are relying on those sidewalks. And, you know, it's... It always, you know, when you see a circumstance where the kids are walking in the street to get to school, you get a little nervous. So really, I know that's a big effort, and the middle school parents appreciate that.
If we have the equipment and it's operational, then we're out there directly after the storm.
Yeah.
If not, before it ends.
I have a question.
Sure.
With respect to striping on the roadways...
Yes.
Is that something that's contracted out?
It's contracted out. That's contracted through the MAPC. We utilize those contracts.
It's done once a year?
It's done once a year. It's... Basically takes through the whole summer. And there might be a slight increase in that budget, because there's more and more line markings and bicycle markings and crosswalks that we have to do. So I put a little bit more money into that budget also.
Well, when it's raining out and it's dark, it's good to have a line you can see.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And, you know, all can decide, especially a fog line, too.
Yep, absolutely. Key initiatives? We... Every year, I put in for DEP grant, the application. That's mainly for the transfer station and recycling. It's a recycling grant. We're getting anywheres from $10,000 to $14,000 per year. We use that money for containers for the swap shop, items for the swap shop. Recycling containers out in the town, we're starting to replace them. Now that we put them out there, they're getting beat up, so we replace them. And we work with the Cleaner Greener Recycling Committee, and if they have a purpose for it, then they can utilize some of that money.
Who takes the flags that are in the bins?
Who takes them?
Scouts, or...
It's Scott McMillan comes in and grabs those.
It's freefall.
Okay. I'll have that checked.
Do the budget figures include all collectively bargained for increases? Are they all reflected?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Another key initiative is the educating the public about recycling and regulation changes. Regulation changes happen all the time, practically yearly. And we've already gone through the sump pump inspection program for sewer. So we have 47 full-time personnel and three-time, part-time personnel. This is myself, the superintendent. I have three full-time administrative staff, five supervisors for each one of the divisions, seven foremen within those divisions, and we have 31 maintenance mechanics, equipment operators, bucket operators, skilled laborers and such. We also have three part-time personnel that work for the transfer station. They come in during Thursdays and Fridays. And also the swap shop coordinator, who's a part-time position.
And are you pretty fully staffed, or are you... Are there open positions?
There is one... There is some open positions. I couldn't get any qualified people in.
Yeah.
So what I did is I hired some temps. Actually, I hired one full-time position, and I got three other temporaries.
Okay.
With the condition that if they got their CDL, minimum qualification for the job, that we would put them on full-time.
Okay.
And I know one has already got their permit, so...
Great, good.
So I don't know if this is...
Yeah, so this is...
Is this right?
This is short, both either-or of the additional request. So this is just the core additional request, or the core request, not the additional.
Okay. So it's always inexpensive, the budget... Total budget, DPW is $3,615,891. Sorry?
There... No, there is.
Yeah, that's right there. Thank you. This includes snow removal, $563,365, and $362,500 for road maintenance. Transfer station is $1,465,046, and the sewer department is $3,225,597. So is... And there is an additional request for snow.
Set up here? So this is the approved additional request that I added. This was not... This was not... You know, Randy doesn't have the information needed to adjust this budget effectively. So after I got his budget in, I added this back. The snow and ice budget is annually underfunded. We all know that. I'm trying to find a way to identify areas within the budget that can...
Sort of incrementally.
Where we should be incremental in terms of our correcting that... Those annually underfunded projects.
You know, I know, under, like, Mass. General Law, municipalities are allowed to deficit spend because of snow removal. In that budget-to-actual ratio, you know, where I get nervous is, you know, when our snow and ice budget is less than half of what the actual is. And it sort of strikes me that, over time, the gap between the budget and versus the actual is widening. And I think, you know, this is a place, we've talked about it in the past, there's a structural deficit here. And, you know, notwithstanding the fact that the winters are getting harsher, things are getting longer, the cost of snow removal is just going up. And so it's, you know, it would be my hope that we, perhaps in this budget cycle, kind of say, you know, where do we want to be relative to that 10-year average, and over what period of time do we want to get there? Because we're not going to get there in one year. And I'm not suggesting that we budget the full amount, you know, the worst-case scenario, but I... To me, this is the potential for an audit point, where somebody just might say, "You're not, you know, you're not really reflecting the activity." So I hope as the budget discussions go along, we can, you know, work in conjunction with our advisory partners to start to chip away at it.
It's something we say every year.
I know, and we... And I, you know, believe me, I mean, that, you know, would I rather, in this budget, would I rather hire more people or have more services? Absolutely. But, you know, like, you know, this is like, you know, in your house, you know, if you're... You know, you got to take care of the roof, you got to take care of the outside. Sometimes we got to spend money on the sort of non-glamorous stuff, but...
It's pretty glamorous.
Pretending it goes... Pretending it will be...
It does snow here, too.
Yeah.
That sidewalk.
You know, hoping the budget will cover it is not, you know...
It's not a strategy.
We don't really budget on hopes in this town. It's...
Yeah, that was very much my thought, Mary. You know, obviously, we can't make up that... And we should attempt to approach zero on this, but like Karen said, an incremental approach, I think, is what I was trying to do.
Because you did the same. Yeah, and I think your approach has been consistent over a couple of budgets where we've had this struggle. Legal services comes to mind, where we need, you know... I think it would also be inconsistent with our prior budget practices to kind of go to the other end of the spectrum. And so I do think that it's not lost on the three of us, and we need to, you know, we need to move it forward. And we're, I think, Donna Smallwood's here from the advisory committee, you know, we're sort of presenting this to you all. You're seeing the same trends that we are, and, you know, we'll have to figure out how to get to that balanced budget, understanding some certain of these facts, so...
And I also don't want to short-shift Randy's original request.
I was going to ask about that.
I'd ask him to explain this. We have discussed it, like I said, but I've asked Randy to please explain to you what his thoughts process was.
The additional request?
The assistant, yeah.
Well...
In calm tones.
I have discussed it with Tom quite a bit. My request is for an assistant superintendent. I started as an assistant. I won't be here forever. I think it would be a good time for someone to come in and learn the ropes, learn what I do, and take some of the burden off me. I have to wear a lot of hats and do a lot of things, numerous things. And it's... I can't get to it all, and it's very frustrating to me, because I'm not that type of person. I want to get things done. And with these new programs coming up, such as the Phase II stormwater and the requirements, and it's going to be, we just got, in February, we're going to be under OSHA for safety regulations. We're going to have to get a safety program up and running, more than so than what we have now. It's somewhat of a daunting task for one person to do it, and my lists, on a daily basis, are two pages long, and I only get through a quarter of them, and it goes to the next day and the next week. And it's... Some things fall through the cracks, and I'm not that type of person. So that's my main reason... So, that's my main reason, is to, you know, have someone come in and be ready to carry on, and to take some of the burden off of, of me, because I want to do a good job, or a better job than I've been doing, and it, it's hard for me to do. And it, and it's very frustrating to me, because that's not the type of person I am.
Well, and I feel like you floated this last year as well.
I did.
And I, I too have had some conversations with Tom, and my understanding is, there'll be some support from the Selectman's Office to work on a management plan, but I, you know, I, I also feel like this needs to stay on the table as a concept for us to consider. But it's a very complex department.
Absolutely.
It's a significant chunk of our budget, and as you've indicated, I, I think the complexity of, of operating the department, the regulatory overlay that you have to deal with, it seems to be only increasing. So, you know, I, I'm supportive of, of exploring a, a management plan with the, again, with the help of the Board of Selectman's Office, but I guess for me, I wouldn't take this off the table.
Oh, it'll be in next year.
Okay.
I, I'm also just wondering, and I think this is something we would have to take offline, but, again, and Randy, it's, you know, the, the entire presentation was terrific, and thank you for taking the time to remind us of the many hats that you wear, and the many challenges in your role. This Phase Two stormwater program, I, listening to you describing it, I have a different appreciate, I, I have a different understanding of it tonight, and one of the things that I'm sort of wondering about is that, you know, sometimes in Hingham, one of the ways that we, that we look at resources is when we have an initiative of this size and scale, we perhaps dedicate some resources to, like, the, the planning, the coordination, the oversight, because, because as I was hearing you describe it, my first thought was that wholly, you know, how are you going to have the bandwidth to do this?
Yeah, it just can't get absorbed.
And, and if I think back in kind of Hingham's history, how have, you know, that's how Roger got here. We had the Green Bush, and we needed somebody to help out, so I, I guess one of the things I'm wondering about is, as we look at some of these regulatory and compliance requirements that are going to be resource-intensive in the next couple of years, does that create an opportunity to do some of that? And, and, you know, if, if there's a resource that's dedicated to some of this, perhaps then there's also some additional time. I'm just seeing a, a potential possibility here that, that we might, you know, that, that I didn't think about before hearing the budget, budget presentation.
When I started as a policeman, the department was about the size it is now. The mission is far more complex, I would have to admit. I mean, the essential mission is unchanged, but some of the things that they have to do is significantly different. That having been said, one of the things that I always look for when I make any kind of employment decision, succession planning, growing the people in the organization, having the right people, you know, to be there to do this work. There's no reason why you should be doing all this yourself. You've got managers in place there. I'm not saying I'm close to the, the idea of it, but I think that needs to be fulsomely just explored.
The, the one thing I would explain is, is so Randy came to the town as the Assistant DPW Director originally, so that's a position that already exists. It's just not funded, funded right now. It doesn't have to be created at town meeting, it pre-exists. You know, the, the intent of, of not, of my, my intent for not funding it this year wasn't that, I don't think that, that work is there. It's, as Paul Intimated, I think we, we could find a better way to, to spread the work out that Randy is tasked with right now, in the current op- within the current operations, but with the caveat that you're absolutely right. As we get into these additional regulatory worlds, and, and things that are added to the department that are not there now, that were not contemplated when the department's structure was created, we do have to consider that.
Right.
I would add to that, though, that the capacity of, of this office, of the administration office right now, with myself and Michelle fully staffed, I think we would be able to assist with the DPW and other departments in terms of policy development and organizational work, so I look forward to doing that. So Randy and I have had that conversation, but obviously, it's up to the community to, to fund what it feels is appropriate.
And that was my concern when we talked about it, was, you know, if you, if you take an already sort of overstressed management structure, and you're not providing the support to sort of realign some of those tasks, you know, giving you some help to do that, but, you know, where does it fall on your two or three pages of things to do? So, I think if we're going to, if we're going to explore that, I, I think, you know, we need to provide you with the resources to get that done, and, you know, I, I would, I would look to that for this cycle, and I'd like to see, you know, how that, how that works out.
Michelle met on, and I met on this an hour ago.
Fantastic.
But, yeah, but, you know, minimal, obviously, but, yes.
Thank you for...
I have one, one last thing.
Your explanation.
I just want to, I want to thank my staff, and all the supervisors and office staff, and, and the workers alike, transfer station, sewer department. They, they do a good job, and, and they're out there and deal with the public pretty effectively, and I do want to thank them, so.
It's nice of you to say, Randy. I'd agree. I think, I think your department does a great job. I think the town is beautifully maintained, and I'm really proud to be, you know, Hingham resident, because there's nothing but good stuff from all of my jealous neighbors who live out of town somewhere else.
I would, I would also add, Randy, you know, and it's interesting, you know, we've seen a lot of, you know, three, four-person departments, and then we get to this one, and it's forty-eight, and it's like boom.
It's like kaboom, yeah.
I think, I think your team oftentimes hears from citizens when they're unhappy about something, and, and I know that sometimes with, without perhaps intending to, residents can express their frustration in, 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 in less than pleasant ways, and sometimes in disrespectful ways, and I appreciate the courtesy and the patience and the consideration that, that your team provides to people, and I, I know that that's not always easy. I wish it maybe didn't happen as much as it does, and I appreciate the, the response of your team to, to those unfortunate situations.
We work on it daily.
It shows. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Great job. Kept you longer than you anticipated, I'm sure, but I had all these obscure questions that only you can answer.
That's fine.
He got to talk about inflow and infiltration, and that's what he loves.
No flaculence, though.
Not yet.
He got to use it again.
I got to use it in the sentence.
Not yet. All right, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Okay, good.
And a nineteen-page vote list.
Well, we...
Should we do one at a time? Will you talk about each one?
I would recommend we do, as presented.
I'd like to entertain a motion to renew the annual common victular slash all alcoholic restaurant licenses as presented to those entities listed on the proposed vote list, which shall be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to renew the annual common victular all alcoholic club licenses as presented, as reflected in the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the common victular wine and malt beverages restaurant licenses as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to renew the common victular wines and malt beverages club license as presented to the Hingham Yard Club, two-eleven down a rap, James Randall manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the retail package store all alcoholic beverages licenses as presented on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the retail package store wines and malt beverages licenses as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew Class One seller's agent license as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the Class Two licenses as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second. I mean, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the annual entertainment licenses as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to renew the annual automatic amusement device license as presented, as shown on the proposed vote list, to be incorporated into the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, we just plowed through a whole lot of licenses. They'll be reflected formally in the minutes upon approval, same, at a subsequent meeting. That pretty much concludes tonight's meeting. Michelle, is there anything you'd like to add before we...
No, thank you.
Okay, Thomas?
Not tonight, thank you.
Counsel?
I just have two, two quick things. One, a couple weeks, a couple meetings ago, we disbanded the Recreation and Fields Master Plan Committee, and we did so in a little bit of short shrift, and I apologize for that, because a lot of people worked for a long time in thinking about our athletic fields. I want to do two things. One, the rationale for disbanding that committee is because there's a proposal currently before CPC that the, the three owners of athletic fields in Hingham, the schools, the Recreation Department, and the Board of Selectmen would come together and hire a professional consultant to determine field condition, including usage, to give us a baseline, sort of inventory of what it is we own and, and how we're using it. And so we'll build on the work of the, the prior Recreation and Fields Master Plan Committee, but because of the engagement of a consultant and a new process, I think, I felt anyway that we needed to disband that committee and sort of begin this project in another manner. So, the thing I didn't do was thank the folks that served on that committee for all of their hard work, so I'd just like to, to thank Paul Gannon and Irma Louter, who represented the Board of Selectmen, Vicki Donlin and Mark, Mark Thorell from Recreation, Bill Friend and Jay McGrail from the South Shore Country Club, Ray Estes represented the schools, Warren Pelliciere represented SNAP, Ted Healy was there from soccer, Susan Rizzo and Tom Hoffman from football, Brian Haladak from lacrosse, Elliot Sherman from Little League, and Tim McGowan from Little League as well, I'm sorry, Elliot Sherman from Babe Ruth and Tim McGowan from Little League. We'll definitely be calling on the folks that use the field as part of this process, but that's the direction we're going in at this point, so appreciate your prior service, and, uh, don't, don't worry, your efforts won't go to waste. And then the last thing I'll say is, I had the privilege today of attending the meeting of the Massachusetts Council on Aging in Milford with my friend Tom Mayo and Barbara Farnsworth, and we sat on a panel with Rocco Longo, who was in Marshfield for a time, and moderated by Kathy Bowler from the Mass Council on Aging. You know, it's just another, another sort of proud moment for the town when you see your Director of Elder Services really held in esteem by her colleagues across the Commonwealth, and was it real honor to participate on that panel.
Couple of quick things. First of all, we, we just went through all of the different votes for the licenses, and I would just let the public know that Sharon Profetti in, in the Selectman's Office...
That's a lot.
Really, that, that, what that represented was several weeks' worth of work in terms of making sure everything is order, making sure everything is in compliance, and we will, we will be signing a lot of documents in the back and are just grateful to Sharon for her continued effort on that. This afternoon, I had the privilege of rec- of representing the board at the annual police luncheon at the country club for three hundred Hingham senior citizens, and it's just a wonderful annual event, and I, I want to just give a particular shout-out to Lieutenant Rusty Corcoran, who really just is, is kind of the driver behind it, and a special thank you to Santa, who, who is pulling heavy duty this season. And then lastly, I just want to remind people, we're entering the holiday season, and Hingham Boy Scout Troop One has a Christmas tree pickup service that is, they just really do a great job, and for a donation of, requested donation of ten dollars, although not required, Boy Scouts will come on the first couple weekends after Christmas to pick up Christmas trees, take them to the transfer station where, you know, Randy and, and his team are nice enough to allow it to be turned into mulch. This is a great service. It is the biggest fundraiser for Hingham Troop One. They typically handle, oh, fifteen hundred to two thousand trees over three days, so the website to sign up is hingamtreedrive.com, and an e-commerce application was added to the website, so you can actually pay in advance, so no more...
No more tying it on a tree.
Putting the little baggie with the ten dollars on the tree and hoping that they don't get separated from one another, or...
That's great.
You know, running out, so, hingamtreedrive.com.
We were doing the J R budget tonight, and that is perhaps my most favorite building in town, only because of the history that's contained inside of it. I'm going to have the pleasure of attending an Eagle Scout ceremony this Saturday, and I'd like to congratulate Mary Sun Connor for achieving that, because I also noticed that he was on the honor roll. That's, that's good, that's good.
Good job, Connor.
Thank you, we're very proud.
You should be, and my compliments to all the young people who made the honor roll. It's a big list in the Journal this week, and it's, it's really nice to see that, because it shows a lot of effort. I spoke last Tuesday night about my intention to speak to the issue of fifty-eight Main Street, and at this point, I'm going to do that, and read just a brief statement. As you all know, property at fifty-eight Main Street was taken down this week. It has been owned by John Pitt since nineteen eighty-one. Regrettably, that property was not properly maintained, and the structures on it continued to deteriorate over the years to the point that they became a hazard. Our building inspector, in accordance with the statute, statutory duties under General Law Chapter one forty-three, determined that the structures on the property were dangerous and unsafe, especially in the case of fire, and issued several orders to Mr. Pitts to have the structures brought into compliance or demolished. Over the last several decades, the town has made every reasonable effort to allow Mr. Pitts the opportunity to save the structures on the property. Town held numerous public hearings, many of which were televised, on this matter, including before the Historic Districts Commission and our own Board of Selectmen. Mr. Pitts was present at those meetings and was given the opportunity to come up with a viable plan to save the structures. Despite the town's efforts, it became clear the property owner elected not to take the steps necessary to bring these structures into compliance. Our building inspector followed all legal procedures before reluctantly having the structures demolished, in order to protect the public safety, including the concerned neighbors living next to the property. Our building inspector's actions are fully supported by the police chief, the fire chief, and this board. To be clear, no town official wanted to see these historic structures demolished. The decision to allow the property to devolve into the condition which was both dangerous and unsafe was not the town of Hingham. Unfortunately, the condition of the property posed an unreasonable risk of danger to the public and gave the town little choice but to take the steps that it did. And on that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. Christmas.